I would like to call the order of special meeting of the Avalon City Council for Wednesday, March 25th. If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we maybe have a few minutes to pray for the family of Billy Engel, who recently passed. You may be seated. And I just wanted to state, fortunately, six feet of separation does not affect our ability to be kind, compassionate, and understanding. Communicating with friends and families is critical in this time of isolation. There are numerous ways to communicate, from writing someone a letter to FaceTiming. This is also a time to count your blessings, and if you are more fortunate than others, please take the time to reach out to them and assist them perhaps with a gift card, utility assistance, whatever we can do to help them during this time. Thank you. Roll call.
Councilmember Haves?
Here.
Councilmember Olson?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Cassidy?
Here.
Mayor Marshall?
Here.
And City Attorney Scott Campbell will be calling in.
Great. Denise?
I just want to remind the public that you can stream this on the City of Avalon's website, cityofavalon.com/meetings, or live on Facebook, facebook.com/cityofavalonofficial. And you can ask questions via email, which is ask, A-S-K, at cityofavalon.com. We have somebody that's manning the phone. It's 310-510-0220, extension 100. And that is for oral communication, that is communicating something to the council. It is not a question and answer period unless it's questions being asked during a general business item that we're discussing this evening. And then I have a few other things, just real quick, Mayor. I wanted to make sure that the public has noticed that our transit system, the Garibaldi is no longer running, but the dial-a-ride program is still up and running. We have two vans that are being able to use, City Hall hours. We are closed on every Friday now, and from lunch, 12 to 1:00, but we are open for business, 8 to 12, and then 1:00 to 5:00 on Monday through Thursday. We have sent numerous letters out to federal lawmakers and the White House, and I'm gonna let Michael talk about that more when he comes up to speak. L.A. County, we were in communication with them today. Property tax deadline has not been extended, so that deadline is still there. But we have been asked to encourage residents, if that's going to be a hard time. We have put on the website and in social media how and who to contact for that. And then I wanted to make sure that the public's aware that the hospital's been doing these fireside chats, that's every Tuesday and Friday. Yesterday, it was on telemedicine, that was, I believe, with Dr. Warren.
Yes.
And then on Friday, it is on mental health. And they have been very, very, very good. We did at the request of, I believe it was Yoli Montano Sei had asked us about the inclusionary housing requirement being waived for Vons, and they did receive a letter saying that we have waived that for them, so they would be able to hire temporary help.
And was there a deadline on that at all, or no? Just until further notice?
Through this crisis until they were not.
Just crisis, okay.
And also their delivery times, the condition that had been set for them has been waived also because they have to get all their stuff in. So that's all I have.
Okay.
Can I make two quick comments on that?
Please.
One, with Vons, could we reach out to Vons and just ensure that if there's food that's nearing its expiration or whatnot, if we could pull them to share that with members of the community through the food bank?
That has already been shared with the city, and Dan is all over it. And he'll report out on his thing.
Oh, perfect.
Thank you.
And then the other one was, when you had mentioned about City Hall being open, it was open but by appointment.
By appointment, thank you, Cindy, yes.
Another question on Vons, are they gonna hire local or be able to bring people from the mainland?
I do not know, Mayor. The one comment I did hear from Vons is that they are union employees, so I do not know how they are gonna be addressing them.
Okay. Okay. And Department heads?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City staff. Just very quickly, the Avalon Fire Department is at full staffing with a continuity of operations plan and standby if needed for exposures. We've implemented all L.A. County EMS and CDC protocols and recommendations for medical responses. We've also been working closely with our L.A. area fire and EMS agencies for policy and protective measures, standardization, so we're all kinda doing the same thing. And we've been taking all measures to protect both our staff and patients. And then finally, it's been a real pleasure working with not only island stakeholders, but the stakeholders with the county and the mainland and all the different agencies. Stuff as simple as Torrance Fire Department picked up some supplies for us and delivered them to the barge, because they knew we were strapped. So it's been a real pleasure when we all pulled together. I can take any questions if you have.
I just have a question. Within this last week, the reduction in, has there been a reduction in calls?
Absolutely. There's been, turns out, you close restaurants, you close bars, you take away a lot of visitors, and a tourism-based economy, the call volume does go down.
Right, okay.
All right.
Chief, would you hold off on, Gabby, is there a specific question for the Fire Department?
Yes, this question is from Yoli. She would like to know what the city's backup plan for Avalon Fire Department is, if they get any symptoms, and what is the backup plan for Baywatch as well?
We're all working off the same strategy for continuity of operations, and we've taken that from the county, the county's taken the lead on that. And the plan is that if staff are exposed and they need to be quarantined, we'll backfill with full-time and reserve staff to keep operations going. If we get to a point that we can't maintain our three-platoon schedule, then we'll go to a two-platoon schedule. So basically, there'll be an on-duty crew and an off-duty crew. We'll maintain that as long as we can. If we get to a point that we're drawn down because of exposure and people in quarantine, beyond that, then we've got a plan in place with our Area F partners with the county, which is Long Beach, Signal Hill, and Los Angeles County. And it would, we would have staff come over from L.A. County Fire, help us run calls, and Baywatch would be in that same position as well.
That's wonderful.
But are you guys adhering to like a no overtime rule for now?
Absolutely. We've pulled approximately 27 overtime shifts off the board. We've made accommodations to cover shifts for staff that's out on injury, and so we've cut overtime to a bare minimum.
Is that it?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Good evening, Council. Extraordinary times that we're in right now. I think we all understand that. As far as the Harbor Department is concerned, we've all tightened our belts, we've gone to a 32-hour work week, and we've closed our fuel dock during the middle of the week, it's open on weekends, 3 to 11:00.
Eight to 11:00.
Our eight to 11:00, thank you. Our Harbor, Harbor 8 in the Mole, we've split time between Tomas and Delgado, Delgado works in the morning, and on Tomas's day off, and Tomas works on Delgado's in the afternoon and when his day's off. So we have a presence over there, and we take the time to make sure that we wipe down the ramps and the rails and stuff before the boat comes in and after the boat leaves. We've ended up having two-man shifts, you know, on day and swing and grave. And we do have backup power if a storm comes up, to be able to man, man the boats. So we're doing what we can, and we realize that it's a, you know, it's a tough time for everybody, and we're just going through it. So, any questions?
I have a question. Are there any tour operations going on in the harbor right now?
No.
None?
None, none at all. All harbor operations, tours and everything, has pretty well shut down.
Okay. I have another question. I don't know if there's any, been any, you know, because we get stuff from other cities, and I know I've been forwarding to Dan about beach closures. We're not really talking about beach closure, are we?
Well...
Are we?
Yes and no. The beach closures came down last week because of the rain. Anytime there's rain, they're gonna close the beaches down. We're not closing them down because of people going, going onto the beach or not following the social distancing.
Okay.
But it just, and we got some rain coming in this tomorrow night through Friday, I think. So we always get an email saying the beaches are closed, but that's standard operating procedure.
Okay. Then I also have a question on, because it's really not in here, but on boaters that are wanting to come over and stay on our harbor?
Yes, it's in the ordinance. It's tied to the transient occupancy.
But Mike, okay, Mike, but if we're doing the stay safe at home in place, is their place, their boat, no matter where it is, or is it where their boat usually is? Because you would think they would just stay in their marina, because that is their residence there, it's not their residence here.
I think that, that topic's gonna come up tonight, and I think we can delve into it a little bit more.
Okay, okay.
And I'd be willing to come back up and explore that, but obviously, I agree with exactly what you're saying, so.
All right. Okay.
That it?
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. John Hawking, Avalon Sheriff's Station. And I have a couple things to go over. Regarding the Sheriff's Department, every morning, we have a conference call with all the relevant entities on the island. And that keeps everybody on the same page, so we all know what's happening at the same time. The sheriff himself actually has a weekly conference call with all contract cities, the city manager, and Assistant City Manager of Avalon is on those calls. So that, you're basically hearing from the person in charge of our emergency operations bureau, the sheriff himself. So he keeps everybody updated on what the Sheriff's Department and the county is doing. We have extra deputy personnel on the mainland that can come to the island at any time via helicopter. All I have to do is make the call, and they'll be here. As of now, we don't need them. The Emergency County Operations Center and the Sheriff's Department's Operations Center is open, and that is where we're getting all our information. They're passing out PPEs, the personal protective equipment, to all the deputies. The Avalon deputies do have the equipment for them. Next is, the Sheriff's Department is asking for the community's compliance with safer-at-home order. We aren't out there to write citations, we aren't out there to arrest people, we just want people to be at home. There is some exceptions, they can go to the grocery store, they can, you know, there's a handful of exceptions, they can go out and exercise, go to a fast-food restaurant, fast food, go to a restaurant and bring something home, you can't eat at the restaurant itself. And you have to remember, this is new for all of us. It's new for the council, it's new for the Sheriff's Department, Fire Department, Harbor Patrol, and we're trying to just use common sense on enforcing these things, that if somebody needs to go out and get something to eat and bring it home, that's fine. There was some complaints about a couple of the restaurants were allowing people to eat at the restaurant but outside. Well, that's a violation of the order, but the restaurant, it wasn't their fault. They had the tables still sitting out there like they normally do. People are used to getting their food and sitting down, finishing eating their burger or whatever they're getting. Well, we contacted each of those restaurants, and they were all extremely cooperative, they moved their tables out of the way, and now the problem's solved. So it's kinda like human nature, you're used to getting something and sitting over in the corner and getting, eating it and so forth. So it wasn't an intentional thing that the restaurants were doing. Regarding evictions, the Sheriff's Department conducts all county court evictions on the island. We are not doing any evictions on the island, zero. That started from the governor, went through the Board of Supervisors, to through the court, so there is no evictions done by the Sheriff's Department on this island during this time period. Curfew, some people talked about curfew. If you're 18 or, or under 18, a juvenile, the curfew law states Sunday through Thursday, you have to be in your residence at 10:00 p.m. Friday and Saturday is 11:00 p.m. So that is for juveniles. We're still getting calls of juveniles even during the daytime, they're out smoking marijuana in public, passing marijuana around to a group of three people, and so forth. That is a violation of the order and the law for smoking in public and all these other things. But the bigger one right now is, we don't want them to get sick, and we don't want them to get us sick, all of us, the community. Last thing I have is, we keep getting calls on one business, Trade Winds. And Trade Winds basically is considering themselves an essential business because they have a Western Union inside the location, inside their business. As I said, this is new to all of us, and the question that keeps coming up, which I don't know the answer to right now, is, are they allowed to remain open because they are a Western Union branch inside that business? Or, and there's basically three ways, are they allowed to remain open and sell everything in their store? Their argument to that is, if you go to any of, any of the stores, let's say you go to one of the liquor stores, and that's allowed to be open as an essential business, but they also sell sweatshirts in there, they sell sunglasses, they sell, you know, all these other items. So the question that keeps coming up is, are they allowed to be open and selling items? We had a call there, I believe it was yesterday, where three people were up at the counter, they were buying tennis shoes, they were buying sweatshirts, they were visitors to the island that are staying at Hamilton Cove, and they wanted to buy some memorabilia and some stuff to take back with them. Well, the next thing, we get a call from another business on the island, hey, if they're open, can I be open? I wanna sell shirts and all that. And that, if you think of the purpose of this order, and that is to keep people separated from each other, so they don't get sick and possibly die, that is important. That's important to remember. So that is one piece of information that I need some guidance on for enforcement issues. But remember, the Sheriff's Department is not trying to arrest people, we aren't trying to issue citations, we aren't trying to do any of that. We're trying to ask for compliance, and that's what we want the people to do. I know that was a little long, but it's very important.
Will we be, when will, what is the status of Trade Winds, and when can we discuss that?
I spoke to John today, and I said, any retail sales cannot happen. If her reasoning for being open is of the Western Union, that's the only function that she can do there, in my opinion.
Is that a decision we make, or, I mean, I, number one, everybody's unemployed. Sadly, I don't know who's gonna have money to send away, but God, I hope they do. I mean, send it to wherever it's needed, but I don't know if we could just restrict the number of hours that she's open. Perhaps, and then people could get their, oh, but then, and then with the six feet of social distancing, I don't know. I don't know if y'all have an opinion.
If I could speak on that?
Oh, there you are.
Yeah, what statewide has been done is for businesses that are open for the essential purposes, it's the intent of the governor's order, it's the intent of the county order, that they're only open for those businesses. So for Trade Winds, if they've got a Western Union, that is the only function that they should be doing. It shouldn't give them a way to open the door for everything else, because that'll draw in more people, and the exact purpose of the law is to have as minimal people out as possible, just doing essential activities. And so if they're going to open, it can only be for the Western Union services, that's it.
Pretty clear?
Okay.
Thank you very much. Any other questions for me?
Good, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I have just a comment related to that. I had received several comments from members of the community regarding the landscape service here on the island, that there's one that does, I know, a good portion of the island company's landscaping, but I think they have some other contracts as well. And just for reference, the island company had paused its contract with Stay Green effective March 20th for two months. So the concern was, wasn't necessarily performing landscaping service itself, because you could certainly, you know, stay six feet away, but it was just having everybody in the vehicle and moving around and all of that, it just presented bad. But before those complaints came in, the island company had already suspended that contract for two months.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Amanda Cook, Planning and Building. Just really quickly, there's been a lot of questions asked as to whether or not the city's taking steps to shut down construction projects. Currently, we have not taken that step. I did reach out to the two largest projects that are currently happening in town, which is the Hotel Villa Portofino, and then the three homes that are under construction out at Hamilton Cove. When I spoke to Fine Line Construction, which has the project at Hotel Villa Portofino, they have a crew of less than 10, and they're practicing distancing and hand sanitizing as much as they can during the project. I think they're doing the same thing at Chet's. And then Mr. Flynn said he has about 12 people working out at Hamilton, but they're on three different job sites, so they're pretty spread out, and he's, most of his crew comes from the mainland, but he has hired a few locals that are out there working with him as well. His overtown crew is staying at the El Torro. So for purposes of all other construction in town, the city has not taken steps to stop construction. Fortunately, that's still happening, and they employ a lot of local people. If someone needs a building permit, or they need to submit plans for plan check, they can contact us, and we'll make an appointment and accommodate them, so that process can still happen.
And if I could note that the governor's order and the county's order specifically exempt construction from those orders. The first governor's order did not include construction, and about one hour later, it included construction. So those are matters that the government, the federal government, the state government, and the county have determined are essential activities.
Of what? I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last little part.
Essential activities.
They have determined those to be essential activities.
Okay, thank you.
Which covers landscaping.
Right, that's what I'm saying, it wasn't, the concern that I got on that wasn't necessarily that they were trimming trees, it was that they were putting six people in a vehicle. And then with this one, the questions that I received on it wasn't so much, why can you do construction, it was about workers coming from the mainland. That was, and I don't know if that was the same that you guys have gotten, but it wasn't necessarily that two people are doing something over here and they're, they're spread out, it was where are they coming from, and what could they potentially be sharing with our community?
And I had quite a few people ask me that same question, and I, my response was that as long as the express is running as public transportation, I don't, and as long as construction is still an exempt activity, I don't think the city would be taking the position to restrict who's getting on the boat. So, anything else for me?
No, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. A lot of our time in the Community Service Department has shifted towards working with the food pantry and continuing the Meals program and working with our homeless program. The Meals, excuse me, the food pantry program, first, I'd like to thank Avalon Community Church for staying open for the pantry. They've made a commitment, we've been assisting with them for the last couple of months as part of our homeless program to assist with that, and we've seen just in the last week now, some spikes in kind of the levels of people that are coming through there. So helping them through keeping stock in the pantry, as well as staffing there and volunteers there to assist with that. So for an example, I think probably last week, you probably heard, Wednesday, we took two phone calls here, where there was some surplus food from Campus by the Sea, island company had some surplus food from their different restaurants. We made arrangements to get that food to the pantry, it was fresh vegetables, fresh fruit. On Friday, we opened up the pantry for a two-hour period of time and put out 475, 475 bags of food to about 250 families. Really appreciative, I got a, I got back, I didn't catch it till later that evening, but a message on the, on the line, and one of our seniors programs, we took some food out to the Meals, and she was in tears, she was just really thankful that the Meals program is, she doesn't really have anybody on the island, the Meals program, somebody checks on her once a day as they, you know, deliver food, and to make that extra step out, to bring some extra food, she was really appreciative, and heard from her every day since. The, the food pantry is seeing about, was seeing about 15 to 20 people, families per week. This was the first week, it's kind of been open since, we closed it last Wednesday, the island, the medical center had asked, we closed it until we could put some procedures in place to making sure that we had gloves, making sure we had masks, making sure that everything in the pantry was wiped down, making sure that we didn't have people coming into the pantry, and the social distancing parameters were kept in play. This week, this week today, from 12 to 2:00, we saw almost 80 families come in. It's quite a spike, you know, 15 to 20 to 80 families, and we think we're gonna continue to see that. A thank you to the Johnson family, Gary Johnson, they donated about, they donated $1,000 in gift cards, we used some of that to make some purchases to stock the pantry. Lions Club is looking at ways to get a little more involved, Knights of Columbus is looking at ways, have contacted us about how to get involved. We have added a donation button to the city website, the mutual, Avalon Mutual Aid, where you can go to the city website now and donate, you know, whether it's $5 or $25 or more towards both the food pantry and the senior meals program. So that's up and running now. A couple things that we're looking to do, by the end of the day tomorrow, we want to start a food drive, we've had a few people ask about, you know, how could they give food and/or money? So we're looking at six locations throughout town, one probably being here at City Hall, one being at the church, and then scattered throughout town, so we'll have those available. We reached out to Vons today to see if they could host one of the containers, the collection sites, and they need to get back to us after, you know, checking with corporate there, but we're hoping that may be an option for us. And then those will just get taken over to the food pantry and then used on a weekly basis. The food pantry, at this point, will continue to run 12 to 2:00 on Wednesdays. We did have the one off on, on Friday this past week. It looks like we've got from Blue Water, 2,000 pounds of chicken coming next week, frozen chicken.
Wow.
So we need to figure out how we can freeze that, hopefully lengthen the span of that and/or just get it into freezers in town, so we'll get more out as that comes together. And then the question about Vons and the partnering there, we, we're hoping to start that today, it didn't happen today, just with some scheduling, but as of next week, the plan is at least initially is to pool items on Tuesday that have, you know, soon to expire, sell-by dates, but not expired, pull it on Tuesday by the Vons staff, we'll pick it up, you know, later the day of Tuesday or Wednesday morning, and at least we've got one day where we're collecting food from there, and, and then if, you know, there's a need to do that more often, you know, we'll look at doing that. I think that's it. The other, the last thing I had was just, again, the Avalon Mutual Aid hotline, it's available to, if you need prescriptions, I know Leo's, the pharmacy, just put out there doing deliveries also, but making grocery store runs, picking the prescriptions, whatever you might need. We've got 20 to 25 volunteers that we've got a list for that responded, that can be of some help there, but that number's 310-780-0938 for, for any of those needs. Any questions?
No, that's wonderful, thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Matt Baker with the Finance Department. As discussed last week, the city, like all businesses in this town, is dependent on visitors to fund its operations. We have reserves available, but we need to make them last, considering we don't know the duration of the stay-at-home measures or the long-term visitor impacts to the town. Last week, the city began cost-saving measures to extend those reserves, including furloughs to city staff, which should save approximately 25% of our payroll costs. We've also made changes to our internal processes to limit nonessential spending. We began renegotiating contracts for changes, given the changes in level of service requirements. And we've also paused all non-grant-funded capital projects that were going on in the town. Again, these temporary cost-saving measures will buy us some time, but ultimately, the lost revenues will need to be replaced to maintain the current levels of service. What we are doing for those new revenues is we've already started the process of reaching out to our insurance company. The city does have business and tax interruption, so we have made a claim as a result of the COVID-19. But again, the collectibility and the timing of when we can collect is still unknown at this time. We are also working with our state and federal representatives, and Mike's going to speak more on that subject in a moment. So hopefully, as these new bills go into effect, we will be looking to get some aid from those funds. Lastly, I think it was discussed last week, the ability to pay via credit card. While I would still encourage everyone to pay via cash or a check if possible, if that is not an option, the city does depend on those tax revenues. So please reach out to the Finance Department. My email is mbaker@cityofavalon.com. And we do have the ability to make one-off arrangements to accept credit cards. Again, it would be my preference if everyone could pay with cash and check, but if that isn't an option, we can work with businesses and taxpayers on that. With that, that's what I have from Finance.
Question? No, thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I do want to give a quick update on what the city has done leading up to today. As Matt had mentioned, the city is actually actively working with our, all of our legislative offices. We've reached out to Loenthal, O'Donnell, we're in contact with Ben Allen, or we will be in contact with Ben Allen's office as well. We've sent out a number of letters to all of our legislative offices in support of some federal items that are coming up, and I'll talk just a minute about that. But really, what we're also trying to do is help tell the story. And as you'll see in just a minute, telling the story of Avalon and some of our condition here is going to be extremely critical to the federal relief package that comes down and how it gets allocated. I think the earlier we can have those conversations, and I would encourage everybody to reach out to their legislative offices, the city is definitely doing that. But if we have other members of the public, our elected officials continuing to reach out to our elected offices, legislative offices, that is extremely important, because they do listen, it does make a difference. And I know that, especially in the story of Avalon, one, that is a community where we're made up of a lot of, mostly visitor revenue, you know, having that stop, it's going to be really critical, and we definitely want to make sure that we get our piece of that. In terms of what's happening at a federal level, the city did send out a couple of letters in support of H.R. 6201. This was the Families First Coronavirus Response Act. This really was something that had been adopted back in March 18th of this year, and it's for paid sick leave and free testing. It also expanded some of the food service programs and extended unemployment benefits. Some of the food service programs that it helps to fund were things like the school meals and the SNAP, or it used to be called FoodStants, but it's the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program. This was really important, but one of the key measures that they left out, especially when looking at the relief to public agencies, is they carved out public agencies from the sick leave. So we wanted to ensure that public agencies were not left out, and there was a big letter-writing campaign that was conducted by the League of California Cities, the National League of Cities, which are the national partnership of municipalities, as well as working with Townsend, our legislative advocates. And so they are working on those revisions. I don't believe those revisions have come down the pike yet. The other big thing that is on everybody's mind right now is, at the federal level, they've passed essentially two different phases of relief packages. And the one that they're working on now, which they're unfortunately currently still working on, is a third phase of that legislation. And this is basically an expansion of what used to be called the CARES Act, which was the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act. This third phase is right now at $2.2 trillion, and it is a relief package. It's got a lot of different things in there. Essentially, what it's doing is providing relief to virtually every rung of the U.S. economic ladder. A big piece of that, about 80% of the first 800 pages of that is going to state and local governments, and they've got a whole bunch of different carve-outs. Trump had indicated, and continues to indicate, that he would sign that immediately. The problem is, they haven't been able to get over that last little hurdle. We were hearing that they were really close, they had finally finalized everything, they were getting ready for a vote, and at the last minute, there was a flurry of last-minute activity from places like New York, understandably so, who were looking for some additional exemptions and additional relief packages on there as well. So they're still in some last-minute negotiations that likely will not get passed today, but we'll keep our fingers crossed. The longer this gets delayed, the longer that, that relief is going to come back to local cities. I do want to kind of carve out or highlight a couple of different pieces of this, though. In this current Phase III legislative act, or legislative relief package, local governments are defined as a county, municipality, or other unit of general government below that state level with a population that exceeds 500,000. So basically, if you're a city of 500,000, you're probably going to get a direct allocation of funds as a result of this. However, if you're not, if you're below that 500 threshold, the state will help to manage that. So it's really important for us to contact our state legislative offices, to talk to them about our situation here, and have those conversations early so that we can move forward. And that's one of the things that we've been doing at the city side, is trying to get that up and running. The other thing that it does, I'm not going to read through the whole thing, because it's over 800 pages, but I do want to highlight a couple of things. One of them is personal protective equipment. There is $100 million to FEMA assistance for firefighters for personal protective equipment for first responders, which is really good news. There's $200 million in there for shelter, food, and supportive services to individuals and families in sudden economic crisis. And it, this has changed a couple of different times on how it's being allocated, but as the bill was written just a few hours ago, the bill would give a one-time check of $1,200 to Americans who make up, up to $75,000 in income. Individuals with little or no tax liability would receive the same amount, which is a change from that previous proposal. You may have heard, a minimum of $600, that's been changed. It doesn't really make any mention for anybody who makes above $75,000, at least in the notes that I have. But as we get information, and once it finally gets finalized, we'll post all of those highlights, particularly as it applies to our residents on our website, and we'll also communicate that out to our business community. The only other thing that I would like to just highlight, because I know that this is a huge economic crisis for the entire state of California and, and the nation, earlier today, Governor Newsom had announced that as of 3/13, so as of March 13th, in less than two weeks, they've seen over 1 million in unemployment claims. So it's definitely impacting a lot of people, and it's only going to continue to get worse. So that's all I have, unless you have any questions for me.
Questions? We're good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thorough, but not nice.
Nicely done.
Yeah.
Nicely presented. Nicely presented.
Right news, but...
So that, there was that one part in there about assistance to cities, and is that the stuff that they're trying to put back in, because that wasn't in there before?
There was always going to be assistance to cities. The problem was, we never knew what that actually entailed and to what extent. And so this spells it out a little bit better. And really, I think the bigger piece is how that funding will be allocated, and how it's going to get funneled down to our level, essentially. And so it's going to come from the federal government. For a city our size, it's going to go through the state, and the state is then going to reallocate that out to any city that is under 500,000. So the more we contact and the more we promote what our story is, hopefully, the faster we can get that, and we can get the relief needed for the revenue lost that we received.
Mike, if I could say one thing about that bill, one thing that our lobbyists in Washington are working on, is in one draft, recent draft of the bill that we saw, the allocation to cities under 500,000 was dependent upon the number of COVID-19 cases that you have. So the more cases you have, the more money you get. That would be unfair for Avalon, because even if we don't ever have one, we've been severely economic impact, economically impacted. And so we're trying to get that language taken care of, take care of our situation where we're impacted, even if we are not directly have COVID-19 cases.
All right, good.
Thank you, Scott.
Thanks, Gary.
And I know I've commented before about how great Townsend is, our grants people. So yesterday, Michael and I listened to this webinar with National League of Cities, and they gave us all these great bullet points, and really pushed us, you know, get, get these letters out today. And so we no sooner had gotten the letters out, and then Gabby went ahead and sent them to Townsend, and they came right back and said, oh, we already submitted those for you. So they're just, they're just on it way even before we are. They're amazing.
Excellent. Okay, oral communication? This is an opportunity for people not in the audience to speak on items not on the agenda. You will be limited to three minutes, and no action will be taken.
Do we, Annie, is there a spot for us to ask questions?
Not today, right now. Well, let's do it after oral, before general business then.
Okay.
Go ahead, Gabby.
Okay, so we've got a lot of questions that don't pertain to the item, so I'll go ahead and read them.
Yeah, why don't you read them? We can answer them here if they're medical ones, we'll have to get them to the hospital to answer.
The first one's from Yoli Say. Does the hospital staff, or how many ventilators does the hospital currently have? Do they have enough staff to man them and other patients coming in? Do we have any quarantine areas that are being considered for patients because the hospital's not big enough? Have you reached out to Governor Newsom to let him know our situation? And we need more medical supplies to help protect our staff, since they're very limited, very limited in the medical staff? We have been taking care of critically ill patients. We do not have ICU units in Catalina. What have you done and what are you currently doing to work with CIMC to ensure the care for our residents as far as quarantine facilities and ICU units and the manpower to staff them? We do not have enough manpower here if we were to start getting sick. Are visitors being discouraged from traveling to the island via Catalina Express? Is Abe's liquor store any such old business? She was called by a visitor who was upset as why we were closed when Catalina Express is not discouraging travelers to visit. She wants to know what our elected leaders are doing to help the community.
I would say most of those, Mayor, are medical questions from Catalina Island Medical Center should be answering those. The one from the Catalina Express, I know that they are making that statement that was the chamberhead put out there, that we had all agreed on, the entities in town. So I'm, I'm not sure why that person wasn't told, but I know for a fact, just this morning, and yesterday morning, Greg Bombard on our nine o'clock call told us how many people were coming to the island on at 7:30, and it was, say, under, it's under 20. And then going home, it's, going back to the mainland for the islanders to going over, hovering it's under 20, and the same thing for the 4:30, and then going back at the evening, there's only like seven. So the numbers have drastically gone down, and I would say it's mainly our residents that are coming back and forth, and occasional contractor or construction person. And so, just to make sure that Yoli knows that we will get her some answers. The Catalina Island Medical Center is coming April 7th to do a presentation here, but I would hope to get her those answers before that.
And I don't know that if, if Mrs. Montaner Say has been watching the webinars that the hospital are going, and those are also on our website. And I think as a council, staff has been supportive in getting out lots of information, from unemployment to, I mean, you name it, it is out there. And it's also, push the button, and it's in Spanish.
I can speak briefly to some of the things that the hospital's done. They've done a terrific job of setting up a screening process out front, and essentially, they've turned the hospital into three separate locations. So the, the ER is separate from the long-term care section, and the clinic is separate from those two, so that everything is isolated and contained, and they don't have employees or patients that are going between units. And they've also changed around their floor plan temporarily, so they could accommodate multiple patients.
And all this, all of that is on those presentations that they've been giving.
All that is on, I'm sorry?
Yeah, Dr. Davis gave that one, and then the one Amy Warren gave was on telemedicine. So it's, it's there, and you said exactly what they're doing.
Terrific.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. The next question's from Leslie Warner. What if Trade Winds stays open for one hour a day for Western Union only?
We will be working on them, number one, to make sure that they're no longer doing retail, and we will ask them about establishing set hours, like the bank.
Addie Casillas from Trade Winds would like to ask, we are reaching out because we are confused as to why other businesses that are considered essential are allowed to sell nonessential items, i.e. Vons, Leo's, liquor stores, Target, Walmart, Costco. Why are we being restricted when we are practicing social distance in our stores? We are also constantly sanitizing the stores. We do not have the public coming in all the time. When there is no one in the establishment, the employees are cleaning and sanitizing.
My answer to that would be that their main purpose is a retail business, and that's why if they didn't have the Western Union at the back of the store, it wouldn't even be open. So I can speak to the Casillases tomorrow if they would give me a call. My extension at City Hall is 122. I would encourage them to call me, please.
I would also note for that speaker that the essential businesses are broadly defined as a grocery store, supermarkets. So that would cover Vons, even if they have things that are broader than the definition.
We have a similar question...
Specifically includes stores that sell groceries and sell non-grocery products necessary for maintaining safety, health, and essential operation of residences.
We have two residents asking the same question. Hello, I saw the County of LA close the hiking trails today, yet I see a lot of posted locals going out and hiking. As far as I know, shelter in place doesn't mean pick up new hobbies, it means stay at home to stop the spread. People can work out from home if they really want to. Is the city going to do anything about this, like finding people who don't comply? And these questions are from Karina Tarkow and Ingrid Chiocote.
My response would be that the county is encouraging people to exercise, and I know that the sheriffs have been, if, so for an example, if you were at Pebly Beach just sitting there throwing rocks, that's not really considered a form of, of exercise, that they have stopped people from doing that. If you were up at the school doing something, they've nicely have asked people to move on, and everybody that they have approached, according to John, has been very compliant with it.
I know that the conservancy closed the...
I know that the Conservancy closed the Trans-Catalina Trail. On all of their data, it shows the trail being closed, but as far as trails in town, there has been people that, you know, walking their dogs, for example, and I don't know if we've had any issues, if the issue is social distancing or not, but we don't have the same numbers of people here that we, that there are in other county, other counties, because I know San Diego closed theirs as well. I would imagine that we would close like the hour trail and all the trails here if it was being, if the order wasn't being followed.
And yes, ma'am, you both are correct on that. You're allowed to go out and walk your dog and get a little exercise. If there's 15 people all walking together, a foot apart, that you just have to think a spirit of the law and letter of the law. That order is meant to keep people separate. So it's not a violation to go out and go walking. The trails in the interior are closed, but you can walk up Avalon Canyon Road with your dog, and that's not a violation of the order.
And in fact, this is Scott, the order specifically says that if you are engaging in an activity such as hiking, walking, biking, that you have to do it, and you have to practice social distancing while you're doing those activities.
Thank you, Scott.
Next question's from Sarah De La Rosa. Are there any hotlines, articles, and links from the hospital that would help those who would feel their depression or anxiety is rising because of the quarantine? Are there any hotlines, articles, and links from the hospital who would help those who would feel their depression or anxiety of the quarantine?
Yes, there is. On the hospital's website, as well as the cities, we'll take you to their link. Yep, and LA County Public Health.
Yeah, LA County Mental Health as well. There's, that number's on our website.
Brian Dawes, is Southern California Edison deferring monthly bill payments for those that need help? When those islanders travel to the mainland and return to Avalon, should they go into a 14-day quarantine?
Go ahead, Denise.
As far as Southern California Edison, I think the only thing, information we've gotten from them would be that they're not shutting off any service for lack of paying your bills. And as far as a resident going to the mainland and coming back, no, we have not entertained the idea that you must quarantine for 14 days.
Please chime in, council.
I think, I thought we had gotten a message from Edison, which explained what you just said, but also, I know that Southern California Edison has assistance for.
In general, they do.
Has assistance in general, but I wonder, I think SCE, they used to have a Catalina page, Catalina Island page, but it doesn't actually, it doesn't actually say anything about the current thing.
If they would work with them extending those payments out over a length of.
Actually, there's two links on SCE.com/catalina. There are to help with financial challenges and payments, and also working to keep you safe during COVID-19. So there are some links on the SCE page.
And if you knew you came in contact with someone who had the virus, you should quarantine.
Absolutely.
It's mandatory.
But just going to the mainland doesn't qualify you.
Or if you have traveled from a location that is of concern.
Yeah.
This is a two-part question from Clara Alvarez Correio. Hello, I had a few questions about the city's food pantry efforts. How is this program funded? Additionally, when a resident attends a food pantry event, are they required to give out any information in exchange for food?
Just looked at my phone, sorry.
This is regarding the city's food pantry efforts. How is this program funded? Additionally, when a resident attends a food pantry event, are they required to give out any information in exchange for food?
The second question, no information in exchange for food, and it is funded by donations, mainly Vons donations twice a year, which are substantial and get us through most of the year. And then at these times, it'll just take individual donations to keep it stocked.
Dan, when you check out at Vons, there's that button on the little fancy machine that says, do you want to donate?
Correct.
Do we know where that's going?
So I asked Brian about that today. I tried not to call him today on his day off and ended up having to. He is going to, it's a corporate, you know, it's a corporate link in the money, so he's going to see what he can do to keep it local, so he's going to check into that and get back to us on it.
Thanks.
Okay, and the second part to that was, recent evidence suggests that the changes to the public charge rule is seriously impacting the utilization of service that are not part of the rule, like food pantries by immigrants and families with immigrants. What are we doing to let families know what utilizing this service will not impact future immigration status?
I'm not looking at the information.
Yeah, I mean, currently, we're, we are not taking any information. If somebody's need and they've come to the pantry and they want food, we're going to hand out food. So we're not taking any information other than, you know, a tick on, you know, how many bags went out.
I mean, the census doesn't even ask an immigration question, and law enforcement doesn't deal with immigration questions, so there, I don't know why we would ever think of doing it for distributing food.
But I do see, sorry, Scott, I do see the need for having some sort of controls on it because you could have two different people from the same family coming to get bags, and as we move forward, you know, we may be in more need of support. So I would encourage you guys to come, to develop some sort of feature that you can ensure that only one household is receiving a bag at a given moment.
I would think that, you know, the next step would be taking an address and then, you know, one per address, and we can go that route, and that would be the extent of the information that we'd be asking for.
This is from Margarita Jackson regarding Western Union options. She would like the public to know that the post office sends Sure Money/Dinero Seguro to Mexico daily. US Bank also sends Western Union. Robert Scott would like to comment on the Western Union. Western Union is online. They also are a phone call away. Trade Winds isn't essential. Next question is from Paula Patterson. Since schools have closed and visitors discouraged, are any of the interior camps still hosting groups, particularly over spring break season? I have heard reports that groups of children and adults are intermittently on the express.
As far as I know, the Conservancy is not doing any groups out in the interior or allowing camping.
And if you want, you can call them directly and ask.
And that is all.
All right, now the council's reports.
Okay, council.
I just really had a question. I, I don't know, do we have to, I mean, do we have to report out all 1,500 phone calls and stuff we've been participative in? We don't have to, right? All the county and stuff? I don't know. Scott, correct us if we have to. Anyway, I'm sure.
No, you only have to report out if you're being paid to attend a meeting. So all the stuff that you do is unpaid, and so you're not legally required to report out on it.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, no. So, well, that's happening, but the only question I would like to ask to have staff, if you would please formulate some sort of public statement regarding fuel prices. I also have kind of tagged the island company in some posts and things online, but I think there's a little bit of confusion about why prices for fuel are so high over here versus now they're dropped so low on the mainland. I don't personally know how to formulate the answer to that, other than Brian Bray's presentation from several years ago that really explained the cost of a gallon of fuel here versus there, but I don't, I don't know that I'm the one that should be explaining that.
And I don't know how big their fuel tanks are, but I do know, so say if it's hundreds and hundreds of gallons and they've purchased at a certain price, that price will apply until they go to get a cheaper amount, I would think.
Yeah, that's what it is. Last in, first out.
I do have a call with Mr. Harold tomorrow, Thursday, that's tomorrow, so I can ask him that question.
I can give you a little breakdown, like Denise was saying. These outfits on the mainland, all these gas stations, mom and pop, they order thousands of gallons of gas, and they ordered it in advance. They play the oil market and stuff, and they order them in advance. So when we buy it, we don't order it like that. We order it as we need it, because we can't afford to buy, you know, 10,000 gallons and have it stored over on the mainland. So the gallons of gas here, like for the fuel dock, are one, California Gas, which is obviously higher, and then it takes into account that everybody that has to touch that gas, the freight that comes over, and by the time it gets to us, have it delivered, pump it, our people pump it, and it's expensive. And we're, I mean, at the fuel dock, we're, you know, I think we're pretty much, we're maybe a little bit higher now because the gas prices have dropped, but, I mean, nobody's buying gas. There's no tour boat people that are buying gas, no boats coming over. They don't come over here to buy gas when they can buy it in Long Beach at, you know, $3 a gallon. So it's, it's an age-old question, is why are we paying so much for gas? But, you know, it's, even in Hawaii, when they buy gas in Hawaii, they take tanker trucks or tank, you know, freighters over, and you buy it cheap and you store it, and that's how you end up making your money. So I hope that helps out a little bit, so.
Thank you. And then just to clarify, from the Conservancy, that day hikes out of Avalon are open, but the campsites are closed in the interior.
Any other comments from council?
Council?
I got nothing.
Okay, shall we go to general business?
I'm sorry, can I interrupt? We are still receiving questions. I don't know if we want to open oral communications up again, or if they should be addressed.
How many we got going there? What are you looking?
We've got a three-part question from Kathleen Hill Carlisle, and one question from Kathleen Ponce.
Okay, let's go for it then. Sorry.
Close it after that.
Okay, this is from Kathleen Hill Carlisle. CIMC posted online asking people to email or call government officials to ask for more protection equipment like masks, gowns, et cetera. What are city officials doing to help contact these government officials to get this equipment requested?
Letters being sent to the legislative.
Once quick reliable testing is available, does the city have a plan for getting that testing specifically for the people making food in restaurants or packing food in the food banks?
I'm sorry, what was, what was the question?
Once quick reliable testing is available, does the city have a plan for getting the testing specifically for the people making food in restaurants or packing food in food banks?
I don't want to speak out of turn. That probably is a.
Medical question.
It's a medical question. However, I don't believe, what am I thinking, that those aren't the kinds of, there has to be a reason for them to be tested, with symptoms or whatever, so if they're doing social distancing and doing the packaging and wearing the gloves and wearing the masks, they should be fine. I hope I didn't go out on a limb on that one.
Perfect.
Last question is from Kathleen Ponce. If we currently have an express commuter book that will expire during this time, is there a plan in place to be able to have an extension on those expired books for local residents, or will those unused tickets be void?
Good question.
I'll be speaking with Mr. Bombard tomorrow morning at 9:00 a.m. on that call. We will ask him that. I wouldn't, I, I don't want to say what the answer will be, but we'll report out at the next meeting. It's a good question.
Okay.
Okay, let me just write my little note there.
Okay.
Okay. This item is before us this evening, and it's the whole purpose for this special meeting, and because it was requested, I believe, by Mayor Protem to have this item to be in line with some other cities, even though the state has already required it in the county, and this is to have a moratorium on evictions for residential commercial. So the ordinance, as you see, is long, and so before I started working with Scott on this, I threw out some other ideas, how aggressive do we want to be as a, as a city and as things are unfolding? And it seems like the more we can do, the better off we will be, so I made sure that all my thoughts were legal, and Scott came back and ruled out some of them, but, so he's worked very hard on this ordinance, and I would like to break it up into a few sections, and there's some sections that I really would like to read so the public knows exactly what it infers, particularly with the eviction and paying of your rents. So the first part is on a residential eviction moratorium. The attached ordinance is in accordance with Executive Order N 2820. It imposes a moratorium on evictions for failure to pay rent during this emergency period. If the tenant demonstrates that the tenant, I'm sorry, if the tenant demonstrates that the tenant is unable to pay rent due to financial impacts related to COVID-19. Under the proposed ordinance, a landlord knows a tenant's inability to pay rent for the covered reasons if the tenant, within 30 days after the date that rent is due, notifies the landlord in writing of lost income and inability to pay full rent due to financial impacts related to COVID-19, and provides documentation to support the claim. Notification in writing includes an email, a text communication to a landlord or the landlord's representative with whom the tenant has previously corresponded by email or text. Any medical or financial information provided to the landlord shall be held in confidence and only used for evaluating the tenant's claim. For purposes of this, of this moratorium on residential evictions, financial impacts related to COVID-19 include, but are not limited to, tenants' lost household income as a result of any of the following. Being sick with COVID-19 or caring for a household or family member who is sick with COVID-19. Layoff, loss of hours, or other income reduction resulting from business closure or other economic or employer impacts of COVID-19. Third one is compliance with recommendations from a government health authority to stay home, self-quarantine, or avoid congregating with others during the state of emergency. Four is extraordinary out-of-pocket medical expenses. And five, childcare needs arising from school closures related to COVID-19. The moratorium does not relieve the tenant from eventually paying the rent within six months after the expiration of the local emergency. The landlord may not charge a late fee on the rent. The moratorium is intended to be narrow, and no other legal remedies available to the landlord are affected by this ordinance. I just wanted to make sure that the public knew that. And in that same section would be the commercial eviction moratorium, and for the same reasons of the disease and that loss of revenue, closing their shops, having to pay wages. So it's for both commercial and residential. So do you want to talk about that section first, or do you want to get into the others?
Unless instead it expires when?
There is, in the conclusion, this would go into effect until May 31st, or, whoops, if the need arises, we shorten it or we lengthen it. Do you want me to go on with the curfew one then?
You want to take them one at a time? Is that easier?
Sure. Anybody want to? I'm happy with what it says about residential evictions.
I'll move, approve all that section of the ordinance.
The one, the one area that I was really concerned about is that I, I just want to encourage everyone to make some sort of good faith payment. Like, I would hate to put this in place and then have everybody say, oh, hey, you know, we're just not going to pay rent until this. I mean, everybody's gonna.
You're gonna have to pay.
Everybody's gonna be affected by what's happening right now, and I just, several people have approached me, which helped get some of this out here, is that, you know, making some sort of effort towards paying rent, and then that shows good faith that you're, you're not just taking, not taking advantage of the system, but that you understand we're all going to be affected. People have property taxes to pay, they, you know, there's water, sewer, saltwater, all of those other. There, you know, there's water, sewer, saltwater, all of those other fees still need to be made. But then I think it makes sense to give it that extension of six months to be able to determine it. But also, there has to also be some sort of remedy for a landlord that, where we say, and I'm saying this in terms of may not charge a late fee. I don't think it's appropriate for a landlord to charge a late fee now. But if we're a year down the road and a tenant is refusing to pay, then they should still have the legal right to move forward in that.
Six months after the emergency.
Okay, so I just want to make sure everybody's taken care of, not...
And it does say that they will eventually have to pay the rent.
I guess that this happened.
Yes, if I could address that point. The ordinance provides for a moratorium on paying rent, but it says that once the six-month period is over, that you have to begin paying the rent back, even if it's a portion of it. And you have to pay it all back within six months. So again, you're going to have the document that you can't pay. And, you know, you're going to be looking at that to see if they really have a loss of income. And then once the six months is over, you have to start paying it back. You just cannot not make any payments. You have to pay, you have to make rent payments for the rent accruing due. And the ordinance requires you to start to make payments on the six months that you did not make payments on.
I hear that. But God bless them all because if I haven't been paying, if I haven't been able to pay rent for so many months and then after six months I have to pay and I'm going back to that minimum wage job, that seems impossible.
I would just note that part of the money that'll be coming out of Washington is designed to help families pay their rent and put food on the table. It's not going to be enough, but it'll help. And then there's unemployment available to help bridge the gap as well.
The only thing I'd like to add to, I talked to Lonnie and that has Beacon Hill, which isn't really impacted, but the Bird Park housing. All of those people just pay 30% of their income. So she's wanting them to realize that, don't just say you're not going to pay your rent. You need to go to her and say how she's been impacted and that kind of thing, and they will adjust their rent. But to just say, I'm not going to pay it, does not, doesn't work. So do we want to go on?
Oley made a motion to accept that section of the ordinance, the urgency ordinance, which has to pass by four votes. I forgot to mention that.
I'll second.
Okay. Further comment? Call for the vote.
I am not plugged in, so let's take a oral vote. Motion made by Councilmember Olson.
Seconded by Mayor Protem.
Excuse me, we have to do these via roll call because we are not allowing the public to be in the meeting. So it has to be roll call then.
Perfect, okay.
Okay, Councilmember Olson.
Aye.
Councilmember Hayes.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Cassidy.
Aye.
Mayor Marshall.
Aye.
Okay, the next section of the ordinance is regarding curfew and loitering. So if people are not heeding with the directiveness of the state and county and health officials, a curfew and loitering restriction is necessary to stop the spread of the virus and avoid an overwhelm to one of our local hospitals or the local hospital. We already have a curfew, as Captain Hawking mentioned, and that is, there's two different hours of it, depending on if the children are, minors are in school or out of school. And it's strictly just for minors. The proposed ordinance includes a proposed curfew of 10 o'clock, and that would be for all residents in the city of Avalon. The council may impose a different time at its discretion. And the curfew is authorized under state law as necessary to provide for the protection of life and property. I will say that loitering, there could be a lot of interpretations of loitering. We did try as a city government, I want to say in about 2005, when we really established and refined our curfew hours. And consensus of the council at that time, it was really hard to come to terms. What would that really mean if it was more than two people, if it was a group of people? Of course, it's a little bit easier in this situation because everything is supposed to be the social distancing of six feet. And I wanted to make sure that a citation could be issued only after the person has been warned and reminded of the restrictions. And lastly, the rules would stay in place through the period of the local emergency and could be suspended if early, if deemed safe.
I will move section four.
Can we discuss a minute?
Yes, of course you can.
Thanks. Okay. People in crowds gathering, again, that already violates social distancing, correct? So there should be no loitering on, should be no loitering, quote unquote. On the curfew, Vons is open until 12:00. So, and I know that there's some people that are, if they are afraid to walk, not afraid, fear for their life, but don't want to walk when they know other people on the street. They might be very comfortable having a walk in the evening. Now, so the curfew for minors, we may want to think versus the curfew for adults. Or if I'm walking my 14-year-old at 10:00 at night and it's just the two of us, is that a problem?
No, you're the guarantee.
Okay. And I guess, so the crowds and people gathering and loitering in public places, I think that, but the curfew, I think we need a little more discussion.
I would have proposed an 8:00 p.m. for minors and a 10:00 p.m. for 21 and older. I mean, part of the concern that we're having now is the, just, you know, I know everybody's stir crazy. We're all stir crazy, having to stay inside and whatnot. But the, you know, not everybody is seeing the need for the social distancing. Not everyone thinks that or believes that this is as big of a deal as it is. And while I want to respect that opinion, I also want to respect the opinion of the rest of the population that does think it's a big deal. And so, you know, I'm in favor, I'm also in favor of, I see the point from Vons. I've always been in favor of the first hour of the day. Vons be open only for seniors or opening an hour earlier. That's not my place to choose how they're going to do that, but I liked that idea. I, I'm sorry, I don't think that we need to be open until midnight. I just, I don't see the need for it. If data presented itself that said, hey, we have, you know, a steady flow of people every hour and it's safer, then that's one thing. But I just, I don't think that we need to be out and about.
Well, I'm agreeing with you on all of that. And they have a, and they're also having a problem with their employees and having to pay a lot of overtime. So if they didn't have to work an extra two hours in the evening, that might be helpful to them. Again, we can't tell Albertson's how to run their business, but...
But I mean, also including myself, I've offered to volunteer from 4:00 to 7:00 in the morning for however many days a week to stock shelves at no cost. And I know that that goes against union rules, but it still is doing my part to say, I'm willing to come in and help to offset the load so that the employees can rest. And I think if we were to put this in place, it would allow for the employees to rest. The only other employees that are out there are Edison, city workers, harbor, fire, or city workers, I should say, Edison, you know, no one else is open right now. So I just, I just don't see the need for it.
If I could just note that provision C of this section, with section four provision C, says that neither the curfew nor the loitering applies to people engaged in essential activities. Those are the activities that the county has determined that you are, you have some purpose for being out in the public. So the intent of this is to say that when you're engaging in an essential activity, which is a store opening, going to and from work, that you're fine. But if you're not engaging in an essential activity, being out after that or loitering, hanging around just when you're not doing one of these things that is protected, is a violation of this ordinance. So that, I just want to make certain, that it does contain an exception for activities that are allowed under the county's order.
And like Oley said, if you're with your family, you're good to go, correct?
As long as you're socially distancing, yeah.
Right, okay.
So if you were going to Vons at 11:00 at night, because that's the only time you could go to the house, that's considered an essential thing?
That would be correct.
I like the eight and 10 personally. Because the kids shouldn't, they should not be out. And it's also, it's dark. It's harder to see everybody when it's, you know, where they can be running up and down the alley or whatever.
What do you guys think?
You've got teenagers. Ask your teenagers.
I mean, I can go with eight and 10. I don't have teenagers.
So let me understand, since I've got it up on my computer here, we're saying minors. The curfew will be at 8:00 p.m. and everyone else 10:00 p.m.
Right.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, and from a law enforcement point of view, what are you thinking about that, Captain?
He was socially distanced.
This coronavirus is very serious. I'm not a doctor, but I listen to the subject matter experts. And we have to do something to keep these people, to keep our community away from each other so it doesn't spread. Currently, with the governor's order and the board of supervisors' order, if there is any loitering, any violation like that, it's a violation of the county code and the government code. The sheriff's department right now is trying not to write citations, trying not to arrest people. We're trying to get the people to comply so they don't get sick. When it comes down to it, I don't see a purpose for this section right now because we already have those orders in place. And that's my opinion on it from talking to the subject matter experts in that field.
If I could just, if I could just address that just on one detail. And that is, under the enforcement provision of the proposed urgency ordinance under section six, we incorporate, one, the sanctions under our emergency code, which makes all these things misdemeanors that the sheriffs would enforce. But the council may recall about four years ago, you adopted an administrative citation form where the city, the code enforcement people could give out tickets. These are civil tickets for fines for violation. And one of the things is this ordinance would allow the city officials to issue people administrative citations, which are non-criminal civil citations that are like little fines. And so this takes some of the burden off of the sheriff's department and allows the city to enforce that if you want. It's just another tool. You don't have to have it in there. But I want to make certain that this ordinance gives city officials and code enforcement the right to enforce curfew and loitering.
And thank you for bringing that up. It just seems the majority of the people are complying. And there are some that are not. And when the sheriff, the board of supervisors, the governor rings the bell, then we will start citing them, arresting them, doing whatever we need to get them to comply. But as of right now, the majority of the residents are complying.
So whether you're out on the street at 10:00 at night watching them loiter or gather or break the curfew, it's the same?
It would be the same. We, once they tell us we can't start issuing citations, right now, we're trying to get their compliance. When we can't get their compliance, then we will issue citations.
No, no, I totally, I totally understand that. But if you're out at 10:00 at night then, or 9:45, and there are people in crowds gathering, or let's say we had the 8:00 for the kids, you would do the same thing. You would tell the people or crowds not to gather, right? And you would tell the kids they needed to be home an hour and 45 minutes ago.
Right, it'd be an example is, let's say it's at noon and you have 15 people gathered together. That's a violation of the order and it's a violation of the county code. Let's say it is at 10:01 p.m., same exact violation on both of them without this section, without the new curfew times in place, you still have the violation of the law.
Are we getting any comments from Gabby where you sit?
No, the questions that we have pertain to the harbor.
Okay, so not up, not up to me.
I don't know, I mean, I would be given those comments, I would be in favor of sort of setting an agreement and not pulling the trigger on that until we needed to.
I mean, I thought part of the curfew was probably in preparation for those communities that are concerned with loitering, I mean, with robberies and break-ins and looting and that kind of thing.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. And I really like what Cindy just said. Have it all ready to go in case we need it. But long 31 years on the sheriff's department, I do not think we need that at this time in our community. But have it ready to go in case we do. That would be my recommendation.
So put it at the discretion and have the city manager trigger it?
Can we do that?
Say that again, Oley, I'm sorry.
We pass it, but the enforcement's at the discretion of the city manager.
So you don't have to come back to the meeting?
Right.
And that would be the advice of Captain Hawking then? Yeah?
Yes.
Is that, is that good, Scott?
Yeah, I can, it's going to be 8:00 for minors, 10:00 for everyone else. And then I will revise paragraph F. Actually, I'm going to revise paragraph D, which talks about the city manager's discretion to enforce this. And so I will say that the city manager, in consultation with the sheriff's department, will be given discretion to enforce this.
Okay, but we were, I don't know if I misunderstood you, but we're not going to do the eight and 10, right? We're not going to do the eight and 10. It would be the city manager and Captain Hawking's decision if they wanted to reduce those hours, right, council?
The hours have to be in the ordinance.
But we weren't going to do it.
So this section would be on hold and at the discretion of Captain Hawking's advice to me that I could enforce that section.
So the ordinance is there, it's urgent, but it doesn't have to come back to the council again.
Do you understand that, Scott?
Yes, you're still going to enact the ordinance.
Yeah.
Okay, but I'm going to put in the language in the ordinance that the city manager working with the sheriff will be charged with triggering enforcement of this.
But loitering in public places is in the order. That should be in there. There is no loitering in public places.
It's in the order, but it's not citable today.
Well, why can't we do loitering and then when it, when, if we have to impact, if we have to decide on curfew, we do curfew?
Under the LA County ruling right now, there is no loitering. And I believe that's why the sheriff had moved a few people along on Front Street over the past weekend and a few days of folks that were just kind of hanging out. I mean, the idea is to walk around, get some fresh air, but unfortunately, we have a whole new way of doing things now.
So now you would be following the county order of no loitering because we don't have that, correct?
Correct. That would be the county order and the governor's order. And to make it real simple, we could go out right now, if there was 15 people together gathering loitering, we can legally give them a citation or arrest them.
Okay, but where do you...
But because it's new, this thing is new to everybody, we're, it's the honeymoon phase where you're just trying to get people to comply.
Totally get it.
If they comply and go home, outstanding at that point. So I really like Cindy's idea, have the 8:00 and 10:00 o'clock, have it ready to go in case we need it. If we need it, then we can pull the trigger and use it. If not, we will continue with this. And the more and more people that aren't complying, especially on the mainland, there's going to come a time where the board of supervisors, the sheriff himself, they're going to say, that's it. The warnings are over. Now we're going to start issuing citations. And we'll go from there. If that's good with you guys?
That's good.
I'd like to move to revise section four.
Well, are we revising or just leaving it out?
Revising it.
Okay.
I thought the motion was to leave it in, but to put it in the discretion that it will not be enforced until...
That's the revision.
That's a change in the rule, okay.
Eight o'clock and 10 o'clock, one, and have the city manager pull the trigger.
I mean, yeah, and sincerely, you know, why, I hate that we're even having to talk about this. Like, it's just, we all need to do our part. It's horrible, you know, I miss my friends, I miss my family. We all want to go out there and be social, you know, we all want to go out and have a good time, and this has hurt all of us, but if we all just do our part, we all stay safe.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, we have received a comment.
Ooh.
This one's from Paula Patterson. I'm not sure if it is something the city has the ability to do, but considering this potential ordinance and county ordinance, it would seem helpful for Vons to close at 10:00 p.m. We could reach out to them.
Give me a motion. A second.
Okay, let's call for the roll call vote.
Councilmember Haves?
Aye.
Councilmember Olson?
Aye.
Mayor Prochab Cassidy?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
And the city manager can talk to Vons and find out the reasoning for the last two hours.
Right.
I think they could be open to stock and what, or open, closed, but working to stock if that's what they felt necessary, but...
I mean, because I agree with you, but asking them about not changing the hours in the morning, but allowing that first hour or whatever for seniors and compromise, but they said not at this time, so we'll see. Okay.
The last section is on the prohibition of transient occupancies, and that's would be our CUPs, it would also be our moorings out in the harbor that do not belong to, if I, if you own a mooring, it doesn't apply to you. And if you have a lease on one of, you're an islander, you have a lease on one of our moorings, as well as any live boards in the town. But it would apply to most CUPs in town, and I say most because if we needed, knock on wood, if we needed some vacation rentals for extra doctors, nurses, or some construction for failing infrastructure that happens, things like that. So it wouldn't apply, it's not a blanket to every CUP and every mooring.
And I have a question. If the order is to stay at home and stay in place, why would, if I, if I lived in Laguna Beach but had a mooring here, why would I be able to come on that mooring if that's not my residence where I stay in place? Just a question.
That's the point.
I can, because the ordinance and the order says, stay at home, home is not defined. If you have a boat, and you could, just like you can have a second home in the cabin in the mountain, you could say that the boat is your residence, and actually, a boat gives you more social distancing. And so, what we are trying to do here is say that if you own a mooring, that's your property, you can use that. But if it's the city's mooring, our hotel out in the harbor is closed, transient occupants, other than those that are performing essential services.
Okay.
And then I do want to clarify, because I've been asked, we did reach out to the state lands commission, and they did not have a problem with us, in essence, closing the harbor. And we reached out to the coastal commission, we did not hear back from them, and so that would be the only reason that this one couldn't go forward as far as our moorings.
I would note that the coastal commission has issued an order saying that, in the city's discretion, it could close beaches.
Yes.
So given that the coastal commission is fine with closing beaches, we believe that once they focus on this and respond to this, that they'd also be comfortable closing the harbor to transient rentals.
I'll move section 5.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, just a one, so, under that scenario, and the harbor mess is coming up, under that scenario, are you saying only people with resident, that would be only people with residential ticket books could go back and forth?
It would be people that are residents of Avalon.
Okay, which our ticket book would kind of...
In our leased moorings, in the city's leased moorings.
Wait, wait, say that again, Scott?
This would apply to the city's moorings, the moorings that the city owns that leases to people when they want to come over. If people own their moorings, this wouldn't apply to them.
And if, and same likewise, if somebody owns a home here in Avalon, and they don't live here full-time, but they choose to come and have refuge in our city, we can't prevent them from coming to their house here, correct?
No, you cannot.
Okay.
Because I know we get that question at the city, so we can't prevent somebody that owns a piece of property or from coming.
Okay.
And that piece of property being a mooring would be the same, the same thing.
So regarding the closing of the harbor, it, if you don't own the mooring, then we can
close the harbor to transient boaters for a short period of time. I've contacted the coast guard, they too have no problem with this issue. So it, I mean, we're getting boats coming over, so, of people that don't live here.
So you would, and that also, just to clarify, because a question was asked of me, could we come over, but they didn't, not owning a mooring, I couldn't give a permission?
If you own a mooring, I don't know, that's a Scott question.
You can't give, what we're saying is that if JJ owns a mooring for, he can't authorize
Somebody else to use it.
Somebody else to come and use his mooring.
That is the intent, yes.
Okay.
Okay, now I'll move section 5 and the balance of the ordinance.
You have a question?
Nope.
We have questions, yes. The first one would like to remain anonymous. If island residents are supposed to be at home in quarantine, what's the point of visitors still coming over on personal boats, plus the Caliian Express being possibly contaminated?
So they're quarant, they would be sheltering, or safer at home, whatever term the county's using, on their boat in the harbor, on their mooring. And if I owned a home, and I'm coming here because I don't want to be on the mainland, they would still be having to shelter in place, either on the boat or in their residence here.
And they would have to stay on their boat, in other words, they couldn't come ashore. If you're quarantined, you have to stay there, and I'm not so sure how we enforce that.
Well, the essential services, they can go to Vons, they can go to Leo's.
If they're contaminated...
Not contaminated.
Okay.
If they come over here on their boat, the residents, so they're sheltered in place, we can still, they can still go to Vons and go to Leo's.
Okay. I guess my question to that one is, a lot of people are saying that you don't know when you're contaminated, and so, that's just, it is what it is?
Some of us sitting at the dais here tonight could be too, JJ. So we can't control everything. It's over town, public transit, so they ask about the boat. I know people are very frustrated about that, but if you're, I can get on public transit on the mainland over there, and even if I'm sheltered in place, but my doctor is three cities over, I can get on public transit and go to my doctor over there. I have to travel that way to come, and then to come back to my house.
It's a good point, yeah.
I guess I...
We're implementing this just to be as strict as we can, that are within our guidelines that we can do.
I think when I get the question...
If I could just read the language in, because what I've clarified, it is in section 5, section B, what I put is, after the language in there, "And only owners of moorings may use their moorings." Comma, "They cannot be used by non-owners." I just clarified the intent, that if you own it, you can use it, but you can't be having a transient occupancy out of one that you own.
I guess, you know, the people do keep bringing up the Catalina Express, and I think there's a little frustration, there's some to only think that all they're doing is wiping down, you know, and I know, to get in public transportation, you get on a bus, you don't, they're not taking your temperature, but I think there's just that concern, but, okay.
But I also think that there's a concern, I mean, I got, I've gotten the same questions over and over again, travel to and from the island, how do we even know that our essential workers are safe? We don't. And we're saying that we're allowing essential people to do all of these things, but yet, you know, we don't know. I mean, we have essential crew that come on a regular basis, back and forth from the mainland, how do we know they're safe? We don't actually know. But it, I mean, it seems like at some point, we would be questioning our essential services, you know, for whatever reason, if, even if Vons has people coming over from the mainland, are they questioning them? Have you been traveling someplace? Have you, you know, do you have any symptoms? All the stuff that they're saying to ask everywhere you go now. I mean, I don't know what the answer is. I know that I am not in favor of stopping the boats to and from the island, because there are people that medically need to go to the mainland for visits, there's, and we just wouldn't do that, but I don't know how to answer the question. I don't think that we should be having visitors, I don't think that we should be having advertising to try to bring visitors over for a very short period of time. I don't agree with hotels still putting their occupancy availability on all of the online travel agents. I think all of that should just come down for a very short period of time. Let us get through whatever portion, people far more experienced than I am, whatever portion they say, let's just do that, and then we can start ramping up. But the hardship is, you have hoteliers still on the OTAs that are saying, "Hey, come over, we got room," and then they're coming over in the express, and then you have the rest of us who are like, "Well, why, why do some people get to do stuff and others don't?" I mean, I think that we should take our rooms offline, and there should be a need, and be able to approve the essential service.
What hotels are still open?
You can go to expediabooking.com, there's vacation rentals and hotels still listed as rooms available.
But their local presence is not open.
But the what?
But the local presence is not open. There's no place for you to pick up a key, if you rent one.
But I'm sure that people will, you know, I've said, and I'll put it out there, I've said, if we have an issue in town, I would open up the Aurora Hotel and put essential workers, such as hospital staff, in the hotel. I would go and make their keys for them, and let them have a place to go. And I know five other hoteliers, we've all talked about it, we would all offer up space for essential workers if we were in a real, that type of emergency situation. So I guess I'm just saying that it just doesn't sit well for some.
You bring up a good point, Mayor Procham, that we would have to send a letter out to all the vacation rentals that we are aware of, as well as CIVR and Hamilton Cove, to tell them that this moratorium is in effect.
If I could just note the importance of the curfew power, the curfew power, I mean, sorry, the quarantine power, that rests with the county health officer, not the city, which is why we just cannot blanket prohibit people from coming on the Catalina Express. I will note that the county health officer has declared that an essential business includes hotels and motels, so they, the county health official, has concluded that those businesses may remain open. I know a lot of businesses have voluntarily closed, but the health department has the power to shut those businesses down, and has not acted to do so.
Well, there you go. There's the answer to that one. Okay.
And then Ole, you were making a motion for the conclusion as well, so I would like us to discuss this May 31st date. Was that meant to be April 31st by chance, or?
No, it was to, it was to go out, and then we can always shorten it when Dean missed.
Yeah.
And Gabby says there's another question.
This one's directed towards JJ and the harbor. This person has two questions, and they would like to remain anonymous. Will we ever stop private vessels from coming into the harbor?
I'm sorry, say that again?
Will we ever stop private vessels from coming into the harbor?
Well, that's what I think what this discussion is about right now, and it sounds like if you own a mooring, you can use it, but if this passes, I assume that we can discourage people from coming over.
Not discourage, I think it's more than discourage.
Well, but here's the deal, if it's small craft advisory, and they come over, we have to give them a mooring, whether you own one or not. So that, I mean, there's a little caveat to this thing, but we are telling them right now that, no, we don't need you to come over right now.
We don't, okay, Denise?
You cannot come over unless they are a mooring owner.
This piece of information wasn't out earlier, so...
That's what we were just saying we're going to do. Now, if you've got some, I would imagine, you use your discretion, if you've got some guy on a little sailboat, and he's, and he was going down to Mexico, and he gets washed up, I mean, we can put him on, I mean, we can't turn him away if they're like...
That is correct.
And, you know...
No, we're not going to put a chain across, saying, no, you know, I mean, and the chances of that happen are pretty slim, because everybody realizes what's going on, so...
Exactly, and thank you for liking that.
Yeah, no problem.
The second part is, could we have those traveling for medical needs show where doctors know?
Okay, is that for me?
No.
And the answer's no by the city attorney?
HIPAA law does not allow us to do that, just like we can't ask people to show that they have certified comfort dogs, or, you know, the dogs.
Okay.
So we can't do that.
And we just received another question, this one's also for JJ. This question's from Gail Fornesier, she's looking for some clarification. If a local resident has a boat, but does not own a mooring, and currently pays to be on a mooring in the harbor, is that still going to be permitted, even if the harbor gets closed?
Yes, because, yes, this applies, this does not apply to Avalon residents.
And would they be able to come and go from that mooring, for example, to go fishing?
Yes. Yeah, this, I think this is for recreational boaters from the mainland coming this way, not for the live boards that are here. You want to go out and go for a sail, come back, that's not the issue.
You can take our dinghies out, and we can do all that.
Yeah, go fishing, do, you know, do what you want.
Good, Gabby?
We have one coming in, I'm not sure if this actually pertains to the item. Can I ask one more question before we conclude this part of it? So, the president made a comment about being back to normal by Easter, and then California Governor Newsom said, "Absolutely not, and we'll make our own determination." And then, so now I'm wondering if the city has any further rights? So if the president says, "We're going to put everything back normal by Easter," and California governor says, "No, we're not," do we have the right to say, "No, we're not here" if we were still under emergency or conditions?
Scott?
The order that governs Avalon is the governor's order and the county order. The presidential order has not trickled down to local entities.
He can't trump us?
Oh, jeez.
Well, he could, but that, he has not done...
Okay, and I was thinking more in terms of, if we were to, if we wanted to extend, I mean, we're...
We can do that.
I'm not saying that we want to, we want to be open by Easter, I'm saying that...
You can be more safe than the governor, or, you can extend this longer than the president's state of emergency, as long as there's a governor's state of emergency and a county state of emergency. That gives you the authority to keep this going.
And now we have Michael Palmer.
Scott, I was just going to add, the governor's order too, right now, is indefinite. They have not given a specific time for that to end. The LA County... The LA County one is, I believe that ends on April 19th, but they could extend that also. So for right now, the governor's order is indefinite or undefined.
Okay. So did we get, get that last section done?
Did you get your last question, Gabby? It doesn't pertain to the item. So we've received about five. Hopefully, myself or staff can provide an answer tomorrow.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so Ole made a motion.
Steve seconded. Second.
And roll call vote?
Councilmember Haves?
Aye.
Councilmember Olson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Cassidy?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
And before you adjourn, Mayor? Did you notice how well Scott's voice was in the sky?
If I could just do, do one thing, I want to make certain that we understand that the 5B says, new transient occupancies, the city-owned moorings are prohibited for non-residents during the period of local emergency. That's what I added, just to clarify that this does not apply to residents.
That was what my motion was for.
Yes. We got it, Scott.
You sound really good, Scott.
No problem.
Did you notice it was better? The phone conversation?
Yes.
What'd you do?
Jordan and Yafet and some gentleman from the mainland did magic today.
Oh, it was the guy that we helped with the radio station.
Nice job, you guys.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah, I will tell you that I can hear things much better than last week.
Oh, good, because boy, people turned, yeah, people went happy.
And I, and we are working on being able to translate into Spanish as well. Did I hear that?
This part of the meeting?
Maybe I didn't hear that. Sorry.
Good night, Scott.
I just want to make sure we get information out there in Spanish as well.
Well, once I put it in English, it, they hit the Spanish button, and it's done.
The written stuff, we can get translated, but the, this whole conversation?
Yeah, got it.
Not yet.
Okay, if there's no further action, meeting adjourned.
Stay safe, everyone. Denise, I'm sending you a copy of the ordinance.